...of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lin, will you take the roll call?
Governor McGovern.
Present.
Dan Patterson.
Here.
Cal Ellis.
Here.
Ray Marr.
Here.
And Ray Morrissey.
Here.
Everybody's present. First, we do have a public comment.
I lost my place.
Ted, you're up first.
Wait one second. I lost my place. A disaster in life. I lost my papers. Oh, I can live it. Oh, here it is. A long time ago, Lynn said, I'm not going to blame you for something. Don't worry. I'm all on myself. A long time ago, Lynn said, I can put you on a list, and what this list will do is it'll send you out the notifications of all the special meetings and things you need to be notified in the town. I thought to myself, wow, that's a great thing. I'm going to do that. So I did that. About a month ago, I get the notice from Lynn about what's going on, and all of a sudden, I get an attachment. Some propaganda. Some fellow, I'm not going to mention his name because he's running for office and he's looking for attention, and he's not doing it in the proper way. He should not be attaching his thoughts, and I'm going to call it propaganda, to the end of a town council agenda or meetings that are coming up using the Lynn's work. Now, I understand it's not illegal. He can do anything he wants with it. But, you know, he came out of a little bit of things, and he made all these statements, and if there's ever a word about fake news, this is it. He says that this special meeting is not only a waste of taxpayers' money, but a waste of time employees. I assume this meeting is costing the town hundreds, if not thousands of dollars. Where'd he get that from? Then, as he makes his way through this whole thing, and of course, all of whom have worked time-received through draft, he's going about the fair solar ordinance. There's no valid reason for it to take place. But in the back of this whole thing, he turns around and says, "We are affected by regular action. The three council members, at worst, Patterson, Marr, and Morrissey, are abusing their authority for personal gains." That's a statement. That is a statement. He's going ahead, and he's sending, I don't want any emails anymore. I would like someone in the town council to make the thing that you send out only blind copies and you destroy the other one. This fellow is going on, he was out here in front the other night, he wasn't really legal, but he has changed the way people in Exeter are going to run for office. We're going to run for office by attacking people, just the way Gina Rondo and the other guy are doing it. They're doing, we're better than that. We are better than that. Can't we operate as human beings rather than going out and making that good, Frankie, I know Frankie well. He'd pick your pocket if he got a chance. Right? Or on the other hand, he'd use a gun. And Danny, he's sneaky. I rest my face.
Next, we have Gina Thorne.
Mostly just a little bit of a follow-up on what Ted said. I also received that email. And when I signed up for the email list, it was to receive copies of town meetings and agendas, and that was its purpose, not to receive a bunch of political file from someone who wanted to spill a bunch of garbage. Thank you, Mr. McGovern, for shutting that down.
Yes, yay.
When that happened, I appreciate that. And I too was wondering if the possibility of blind carbon copy is something that would be beneficial for that email list, so that it is just going out in a private way to notify town members of meetings coming up, but not be in such a way that someone can throw a bunch of backlash that's really unnecessary and unwanted. Second, very quick comment. Mr. Morrissey, I have to applaud your courage in asking for rescind and retaliation, given the political climate that we're in, knowing that it's an election year. That took a lot of courage, knowing that whichever side you stood on that line, you were going to get slammed from one side or the other. I appreciate that. I very much so respect someone that votes their conscience, not their pressure. And Robert's Rules of Order is very clear in how it's written, that if someone feels they have made a mistake in a vote, that they do have the option to say, wait a minute, I made a mistake. I need to fix that. That is not unprecedented in the slightest. It's very clearly written. If I had one suggestion for councils in general moving forward, that Crash Course in Robert's Rules of Order is something that should be mandatory, in my opinion, for everybody who's going to be a councilman now and in the future, to make sure that you know what your options are, to protect yourself as much as to protect the public. It is a protocol that meetings are run by. It is the protocol that this town runs its meetings by, and being proficient in it is never a bad thing. Thank you.
Since that email did go out, this notice for tonight did go out blind copy, and so will all future.
Thank you.
Moving on to number four, acknowledgements and announcements. I do have one. On October 3rd at 2:18 in the afternoon, everybody will be getting a text message from the president. It's an emergency alert. It's a test. It'll strictly say, this is a test, and no further action is due. It's a mandatory test the government has to do every three years. Is there any other knowledge for the council?
Thank you, Kevin. We received the monthly report from Department of Social Services Director Christine Skaggs, and she notes a couple of things that I thought were worth bringing to the public's attention. One of them is that, as she calls it, an open registration for families that might be in need of some assistance at the holidays. And she is asking that if a family that might benefit from some assistance with the holidays, that you contact her office by October 20th. And she also indicates that her office is collecting used coats that will also be available for local people during the winter months that may need that kind of assistance, and they could be brought either here or to the public library on the street. Thank you, Kevin.
Further acknowledgements or announcements by the council? Hearing now, move on to approval of the agenda order. Motion?
I will gladly approve the order. Is it a tease?
Second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We've got a consent agenda. There were no Reynolds vouchers this month?
No, there was one. There's a voucher to approve. They want to collaborate with 211 United Way, and there's a home repair fee of $5,000. It's all in one voucher, no communication number 28.
Are there any reports anybody wishes to remove? Communications, we'll start with Frank.
Not tonight, Mr. President.
Right.
Right?
Five, eight, nine, sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. A lot to swallow, right? Most of them.
All might have been pulled. Dan?
I got left at number four.
And Cal?
No, mine might have been covered.
Minutes, we're going to be recording the minutes. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've got vacancies and appointments, vacancies, personnel, conservation economics, still nothing. Resignations, we have two. We have Heidi Tarasco from the animal shelter tenant. We received that communication last month. We did receive a letter this evening from Steve for the recommendation. Do we know if we should speak to it? Do you want to speak to it, or the letter from Steve?
Yep.
Sorry. Sorry.
And this is what we answer. We've received...
One sec. Well, first, I say we got to receive the resignation letter. I apologize.
Motion to accept.
We did that.
I thought we did too.
No, we just did a motion to post because we had received the letter.
In time. Okay. So I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Heidi Tarasco with regret and thank her for her service. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's on.
All right. Next, we have a resignation from Joanne Helstead, from the Library Board of Trustees. I'll make a motion that we accept her resignation, all to regret and thank her for her service.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And now I'll make a motion that we post for the Library Board of Trustees to fill Joanne's position.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we move on to appointments. First, Memorial Day Parade Committee. We had two applicants. Communication number 23, Manny Andrews and Sharon Swanson.
I suggested this before. I think those names, what, they just kept the one in our files, so when the committee awaits after the first of the year, they'll be contacted, which I think is what you would do. I'm not sure. I know we have appointed, I don't know if...
Yeah, we have appointed three, yes.
I mean, the time might come when some of those people might not want to pursue it, but still, we can go ahead with that if we wish.
So you're making a motion, Cal?
Well, I will. I'll move that we appoint those two individuals to the committee.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Any discussion on the motion?
I have a little bit of discussion. The one individual who was mentioned using town resources for campaign propaganda, and I can't support an individual that would use, basically breaking state law by what they did. So I don't have a problem with the other individual.
So I'll make a motion to amend the first motion to do them separately, if that's all right with you, Cal?
Sure.
All right with you. Right?
Yeah.
So first...
Do you need a second? Just made the motion?
I amended it.
Just mending it?
Yeah. So the first, we'll consider them separately. First is the request to appoint Manny Andrews to the Exeter Memorial Day Parade. So, second, so all those in favor, say aye?
I'll say aye.
Aye. And opposed?
Nay.
Right, you voted in the affirmative until 3:02. That passes. Next, we have Sharon Swanson. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, the Painting Board of Canvassers, alternate member. We did have an applicant for a recommendation from the Exeter Democratic Committee for Olivia D. Francisco D. for that position.
I would love that she be appointed by the committee was finally able to identify someone willing to come forward and assess.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Exeter West Greenwich Regional School District Building Committee member, still no applicants.
Should we continue to post?
Frank, what was your recommendation on that?
Yes, I would.
Now we get to the animal shelter attendant. Now you're up.
Well, we got a letter from the Director of Public Works, and he has said that after Cal's review of the applicant's resumes, one applicant has many years of volunteering and has been a floater at the shelter, has animal handling experience, and would make an immense improvement to the Animal Control Division of the Exeter Public Works Department. And his recommendation for the position is Captain Eleven. How do you say eleven, right? Eleven, yeah. I know cat, oh, we call a cat, when going to the shelter, I go down there, try to go down there at the sun there in the mornings, and Cat's usually there. And she's really very knowledgeable and very, very professional, as Steve had probably had noticed about her, very dedicated. And I, on that note, I'd like to thank all the volunteers that volunteer at that shelter, and they're usually down there in the morning helping out. So, but Cat stands out, and so glad that he recommended Cat to us. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Catherine Eleven as the new animal shelter attendant.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Right, motion carries. No expiring terms. We move on to number eight, the public hearing for the proposed amendments to the Exeter Code of Ordinances, Chapter 42, Taxation, Article 8, Boone Lake Dam Management District. I'll make a motion to open the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
It's open. Is anybody from the council wish to speak to it first? We do have Melissa Anderson.
Hello. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Melissa Anderson. I am the treasurer for the Boone Lake Dam Management District. We have submitted an ordinance change proposal to the town council that includes two main provisions, which would expand the BLDMD board, as well as separate our financial and lake maintenance meetings and incorporate quarterly meetings. The objectives we were trying to accomplish with this would just be to get more input on a board level. Right now, we are a three-member board, and there is a lot of things that come across our plate that we need to deal with. And we're finding consequently that we just don't have enough manpower to deal with everything that we need to in an efficient manner. So along with expanding our board for that purpose, we're also looking into a contingency plan for Boone Lake Dam Management District. We want to make sure that we are getting board members in now who can be trained so that they can take over the taxation and collecting and assessing that needs to be done. Along with the addition of quarterly meetings, separating the financial meeting and lake lowering, we're hoping that our meetings will become more efficient and a little bit shorter. We do have a lot of information that we'd like to get out to our residents, so we want to make sure that through this, hopefully, we are increasing transparency to our residents.
Any questions for Melissa? I have been in talks with Stephan regarding the Emergency Action Plan, I guess you guys are trying to develop. And in the ordinance itself, there is language that says that you guys would give us a report annually. Although, I don't think you've ever received one from you guys. I think part of it is that, the way you guys are sitting at the table, it is lines 334 and 335. It's as though submit annually detailed reports to us. I think the problem is we don't know what kind of report to say. They could just submit a report saying the Boone management exists, and that would be the report. So I kind of have language that would clarify that, and I kind of, so I made copies so everybody could see it. Want to take one down, pass it around? So it would replace the language in that section in its entirety. So Section 42-197, reporting to town and Department of Environmental Management, shall read, "Prior to December 31st of each year, the board shall submit complete and detailed reports to the town and department of environmental management. The report shall include repairs done to the dam, all scheduled or to-be-scheduled repairs, enumerate the financial and real holdings of the VLDM, and the complete and approved emergency action plan." That way we get a sense of, do they have the financial resources? Should the dam fail to repair it? Other significant repairs going on. Because although Boone Lake is aware of it, downstream may not be aware of what's happening with the dam, which if it failed, would affect their properties and Exeter residents. And then also, improved action plan is something that all dam owners, regardless of size, have to completely have approved by anybody in the town that we have packed. So if the dam goes and DPW has a role, they have to sign off on it. But if they're saying, nope, we'll fix it all within ourselves, then they sign off on their own report. That would be my amendment to the ordinance that they proposed. Otherwise, I'd go through it. You guys did go through the proper channel within the ordinance?
Yes.
Melissa, I have a question.
Sure.
I'm going through this draft.
Yes.
Where you've underlined that that's where you changed the language, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm used to seeing it highlighted in a different color. What's the state law itself?
My...
Right now, you don't have a financial meeting?
We do.
You do?
We have a budget meeting.
A budget meeting?
A new budget meeting, yes.
Okay.
The current, when is it set by? It's like the last Thursday of June or something like that, the way it's currently ran?
I believe so.
It just kind of changes that a little bit for them, gives them a little more freedom.
A little clarification. I think Lynn was the one that underlined the changes, right?
Yeah, just because they had it in highlight, and highlighting the copy over for you guys.
Sorry, yes.
As they gave it to us, I would...
So, and I would just make note that, that note, very important, that they just highlighted the changes we think they made. But usually, the changes should be apart from the document itself, if it was coming from the outside. We still don't know what the changes were, unless we did a line-by-line analysis of the entire documents. So if something just wasn't highlighted by mistake, we wouldn't know that. And we wouldn't be looking at. So I would suggest a better, all at point, line-by-line change for what section is recommended to be changed, just to ensure that you're not adopting something that you don't intend to work out. Does that make sense?
Did you say first, before we're adopting it, just get a line-by-line comparison?
Yeah, and it's not to be difficult, just to guarantee that the changes that are being made are those intended and what's known to the council and to the Boone Lake.
So we probably just close this, and then that's the document?
Yeah, it's not wrong, but I would suggest we're getting that language broken out.
And my memo doesn't follow that?
Right, and that's why it brings more attention to it, because there are formatting differences between the two documents and our ordinance.
Would that be something...
Yeah, we could do that, but it just shows you there's much more to it than just simple line changes and highlighting. That some of the Roman numerals are used in our ordinance, yet these were A to F.
Yeah, and they use letters, and they use numbers, and vice versa.
Right, so there's a little more.
So if I send this to you, to you, this is what's going to go in the book, not what we have with changes. It won't follow the rest of our ordinances by the way we number sections and subsections. It doesn't follow.
Right, so this would be something that they modify, then bring it and send it back to us, or would this be something we would do on our own?
Well, we already have it.
Right.
The laws would do would change our current version with their amended version and underline the strike through what it should be done.
Right.
So you'd know which exactly you want. But it should be under the control of the town and the council in order to amend that document itself.
Okay.
Just to guarantee it.
So then we should continue this public hearing until next month until we...
Until you see all the changes.
So they should revise it to follow what we have in the book, section numbers. I mean, they use a Roman numerals where we use section numbers.
Did it automatically change for you?
So we did not make any changes to the Roman numerals. That was our original document that we did have that was passed by the town council. The only things that were changed were the highlights. That was the document that we had on file in the previous board.
But that's not the one we have.
Right, so you don't know this is the one that's online. Did you check in against the online version?
They checked it, I think, against the, if I'm remembering right, from their version of the online, not our version. They have, there's ordinance on their webpage.
Yes.
But it doesn't match up.
Oh, right there, it's different way, so.
Just a question. I can remember going through the process years ago. I happened to be sitting where you are, Kevin, as we had, with a room full of people adopting something that had been proposed. And I wonder if, after accepting that, or after approving it by the council, that perhaps it was reformatted here in house to match with everything else, or you might have. I wonder if that's why you have what you originally worked with, which is what sounds like you're telling us, that you have your original proposals that you marked up and changed. And I wonder if that's where the difference came in, that once it got here, it might have been...
It got formatted into our format.
Right. So that's probably what happened. So now we need to have this in the same format, is what you're saying.
And we think we wanted to follow what the rest of the book...
Well, you just want to give them to you that maybe they, they don't, we have the final version, no matter what. Delay, we don't know.
Okay. So continue until next month then? All right, so I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until November.
Starting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before you move on, is that, is that clear what you need to...
So you'd like us to resubmit it to your format that we're asking?
Right, you send it with the...
With the highlighted changes again?
Right, but so if it's a straight through, like you're changing a word, straight through with a new word next to it, or made in addition to a separate file?
You can make it easier, just write out what you want and say, like, Section 42-191, it says right here, it uses a, like Lynn's examples, uses a capital A, not a A with parentheses. Just put in on page whatever, section, the section number, and that's online, so our section numbers, and just put the changes. And it could be a simple, less than one-page thing. We'll just put them into it to make sure they fit where they need to fit. Because still, if you send the draft copy, if you send a draft copy with the changes made, we still don't know. We're taking your word that all track changes are on those sections that you want to change or anything else.
So I think what you kind of say is, you write another section, you look at the state or the ordinances, you see the section and the chapter, and you just write, changing this section right here, like, changing the word budget to financial in this section, adding this language, section, just enumerate it sectionally like that, and you just type that out.
When this was submitted originally for consideration, the changes were outlined in the email format, noting what things were highlighted, such as the changes of the word budget to financial, which is a big change throughout the document, and the sections that were changed as well. So does that match up?
Because I think the way you submit was the whole thing.
In the email that came along with the attachment, yes. Would you like more information than that, to that point?
Yeah, I think that's what we're looking for.
We'll change the document. We just want to know what your suggested language is for each section.
Right, and that summary was included in the original email that was submitted.
Not summary, but like enumerate each section, then where the change is. I think that makes more sense. So it'd be like, Section 42-191, Section 42-193, and then the change that's happening in that. You can just say, like, just changing this one word for this sentence, or adding this sentence, stuff like that.
If you want, I can give you a copy of what we have, of what it looks like in the book now.
Mr. President? First off, I appreciate your assistance with that, and also, the board has been in touch with me, that they are actively working on a plan. As the language is written, regardless of the makeup of the council, what we didn't take into consideration is our current Emergency Management Director for the state that would sign off on the plan is currently going through Senate hearings to become the Deputy Administrator for FEMA. That may slow the process of getting a final approved draft. So I'd ask that the first revision of the final copy at least be given consideration to December 31st for an acceptable amount of time, where I can report back to them, in all fairness, to the board, as well as the town. But they are actively working on the plan at this time.
Okay. Moving on to number nine, new business, personnel, labor. Can you do anything? Be... The introduction, consideration, and post-production of the impact fee study contract.
Hey, um, we discussed at the end of the town council work session. The only change that was asked of was to add Exeter to be part of the contract, and then was to identify the town. And that was Jim's, um, response to his review. And other than that, we talked about and discussed what we were going with it. So I was talking to the council now to vote if you'd want to, um, hire a discomplainer to come in and do the, the assessment.
So the language has all been updated here with the identification?
Next day.
I'll make a motion to enter into the agreement with Tissue Abies Inc. and, um, for the impact fee study.
Oh, now second. And, and then, under discussion, I think for the record, Ken, I know you, you shared with us that the department has met. They were, they found the approach to be acceptable, appropriate, and the experience of the company, of the companies, was led you all to feel good about working with them. So, so I think it's, you know, under discussion of the motion, this record should show that. Anything, Ken, what can you add to what I just said?
And also, the, the amount, what you did for it, um, will be taken out of the impact fees themselves. So that's a lot value, like, they're going to weigh into the, the draft language. If it's a viable town or if it's not, or...
No expense.
No expense.
And we, did we not have some money set aside as well?
By resolution, we put in that we're going to spend up to forty thousand dollars to conduct this study.
But it appears we won't have to do the... And it's something that needs attention. Very much needs attention, so, but that's, uh, the right thing to do.
Any further discussion from the council? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Ken, for your...
Yes, Ken.
Under number C, Department of Public Works, request to proceed to bid steel plates for salt shag. Right?
I make the motion to, uh, rate the request, uh, Department of Public Works, uh, which is the link. To, um, to proceed to bid for steel plates for the salt shag.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I got a question. Steve, what kind of actually buy it?
There are pro, there are three different sizes. Um, they're basically to connect all of the precast concrete blocks together
Okay.
to obtain the proper engineering lift load for the, for the structure.
Road plates or something?
No, it's just sixteen by twenty-four, sixteen by sixteen. They're basically just going to be, uh, filthy or wedged anchor on the, the corners of the blocks.
Yeah, we're going to get one bid or anybody, but so...
This, they're, I'm hoping to get two. Uh, I'm trying.
That's, I was asking, because I didn't know if it was road plates, so...
And they're, uh, they're steel, but galvanized.
Yeah, but then that can be one-inch thick, so...
No, three. It's just quite a few.
So if it's galvanized, they should last for a while?
Yeah, they're on the outside of the, you know, thirty-inch, um, precast cement block, so they should last a long, long time. It's a very proven, long-lasting product.
Very good.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. D, the E permitting process, the purchase of tablets.
Yeah, sent to me now today, from Proximis Course.
Is she in? The term, I don't need that. I just, it's questioning budget. I can't remember what it is on budget. Do you know about money?
I don't know. I remember her.
For, under their expenses.
But they have a bill for the migration, so, that took some of that, I think, but...
Yeah, look, Maria's here, really.
Right.
Might as well have to speak to her, find out how much we spent so far.
Do they need to have...
That's only twenty-five.
If you have a service runs thirty-five to seventy per month? Is that, do they need to have the tablets outside of town hall?
Well, they, they want to use them on-site.
Okay.
That's what their plan is, to use them on-site.
Because that's the intent of the program, right?
Update permit while they're on-site.
Took no, just going the wrong way and a lot fewer getting... Gets a little scary, huh?
Still dead spots in town, though, right? I mean, it's going to be certain places you won't be able to use them, right? That's all.
That's what you get, closing towns.
I mean, Verizon's more expensive, but the coverage is better, so.
I think if the, uh, tablets are Microsoft product. Microsoft would be a Macintosh.
We said we have iPads, so iPad would be Apple. But it would, I would say, depend on, uh...
Sometimes...
Product, uh, program.
You know, people say iPad with iPad. With Q-tips, they always associate something.
We already have a government account with Verizon. That's who has the government GSA account right now, and we get reduced price on, uh, the hardware as well as the internet access. So, that'll...
So the price is going up, and will we officially go up?
My question was, they say iPads, is that an operating system? Do they have a Macintosh system? Operating system?
It'll be Android, I think. It'll be like either a Galaxy tablet or an iPad. Yeah, and the iPads, I think, are better, I think.
I know some of the software is kind of weird.
Could I, could I just suggest then that we put a motion on the, on the table for discussion? So we can move ahead. I, I would move that we purchase the tablets and other services required for the inspectors to, uh, work with the E permitting system.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
I make that for discussion, so that we can talk about this. We're looking for a lady with money. Do you have money?
Depends. So we, we got a, a bill, and the bill, and I think you'll see it on the bill sheet, is... So seventeen fifteen is for the annual support. The entire bill is for, um, eighty-seven fifteen. So that leaves another seven thousand for the one-time, uh, implementation fee. And so we did budget for eight thousand for that. We also budgeted, um, some, uh, so the whole, um, the whole line item is twelve thousand five. Seven is going to be eaten up by this, uh, with another five or so.
Was that under the inspector's expenses?
Yes, that was under their budget, their building inspection supplies.
Supply, okay. I know we discussed that that's where it appeared in the budget.
I'll take your purchase and the tablets and the monthly fees.
Uh, the tablets are what, two thousand?
No.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be close, but it should, it should, it should work it out. They usually don't spend a lot of money, uh, as a general rule. Their, last year's, uh, budget was, um, they only spent about two thousand dollars out of their budget last year. Just for regular supplies and...
And one is to move ahead, or what's, these expenses, some of that line item for a future financial tab meeting will prob, can be probably reduced somewhat.
Well, that eight thousand dollars, which I guess is seven, uh, they actually go with seven, that, that should be a one-time fee.
That was the migration of all the information.
The history, the...
And, and the purchase of, of this equipment as well, some of like the tablets.
I mean, now the tablet, oh, well, yeah, sure, if we pay it this year, next year is when we need to, right.
They would just have to make sure they have in their budget the money to pay the monthly...
Of the monthly service for it, sure. So, in other words, there is a cost involved, but the service that folks in town receive as a result is what's supposed to be the benefit of this program, correct?
Yeah, and then it can be evaluated to see how, uh, practical it is, if it's used, you know, if they use it, if they use it on-site, if it's worth the money spent, but I, I guess that first year we should...
So based on your memo, right, Lynn, it says maximum with the service and the hardware would be forty-one hundred, right?
Which we just squeak out, you know, five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We'll just have to beg for everything else.
So, right?
So they can't spend any...
I have a question on the annual fee.
They can't spend any money. They have no, there was no money to, no budget for anything else.
But they don't have a big...
But they don't.
Right.
Is the, you know, seventeen fifty on the annual fee, once it's in the annual support, is that half? Because this year is half, way old?
I, no, I think they're, they were budgeting, they only pay about two thousand with vision, and it was supposed to be right about the same.
Oh, and I talk about the list and the annual support, you know, on my committee.
That's what we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about.
Are you saying that they prorate it because it was half a year?
I don't think so.
No.
Because a year is a year for them. A year is twelve months.
A year is running from now.
Even if it's only a month, it's a year.
But then when you start, it's a year.
Oh, my.
So we want to go forward with the purchase?
We, 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 yeah, I think we should, but, but I have that, what I call, practical question regarding technology, one that isn't on top of it all, just because it's a generational thing, sort of. Anyway, these, there's an indication that these, these gentlemen will, they, they know about it. They're ready to move forward on it, because it's, I assume this is correct. I liken the nodding of heads.
Yes, yes.
I wouldn't like it if it was shaking it.
They're aware.
That's good, that's good. I'm all for it.
Right? By service, you mean cell service?
So they'd be able to actually, um, have hotspots.
Okay, um, so these...
Or is this cellular?
Tablets.
Well, that's what I, so you're focusing, but, we can look at the hotspots, but, uh, that's what I got today for numbers to give.
Even if you use a hotspot, it still eats up your cellular data.
Yeah, so the...
It may, it may, it may make tablets more efficient, but it's not like you, it's not, you're still using up cellular data, so you have to make sure that it's unlimited data plan.
Right, for the ta, yeah. For that, you're going, like, uh, the cellular unlimited data plan.
Right.
And then you, you wouldn't need to have a hotspot, it would just run off its own data.
Yeah, uh, careful.
They can share the data, you can have unlimited data and share all four tablets.
Okay. There we go.
My second question was, um, so these devices, or iPads or tablets, they don't fall under our IT contract?
No.
In the future? We won't have any to do with that, with our devices, correct?
Well, moving forward, you don't know that. We, it is now, no.
Right, as of now, no, it's outside of the authority of the IT contract.
Okay, so in the future, when these things need to be changed or upgraded?
As of right now, that would be up to us to operate them. In the future, if that does go under an IT contract, that would be a part of the IT contract, if we choose to go in that direction.
Got it, thank you.
Is it getting you? I guess so.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Closed? It's very strange, as you know. Do you agree?
It's a completely different operating system.
Ken, historic cemeteries and... Perfect. Uh, impact fee study, you're all good?
Finished, yeah.
Alright. Nothing new on C at this time? Uh, we're at, uh, the door for IT. Um, did you guys have a meeting?
We haven't heard from James at all. Do I know if you have a better chance of contacting him?
Alright, oh, he's out with me.
He was on vacation with Jim.
Do we want to, I mean, this has been going on now for, what, a year, right? I mean, we had the original consult.
Yep.
And we brought the consultant in, and we got the rapport, and now we're going on like four or five months. So I think we need a definite answer on Mr. Angie, whether or not he's still interested or not interested. Because if he isn't, we need to go somewhere else, otherwise this is going to just continue to be out there.
Kind of languish.
Okay.
You're also, you're going to also have to go off the bid one way or the other, not in your service.
Right, no, absolutely.
If you're going to switch services from...
Right.
More Kingston.
Right. And granted, we're approaching the end of the calendar year, not the fiscal year, but still, I think it's something that we need to...
I have a plan for me the next fiscal year.
My point is, I think the council's been patient, trying to figure out whether or not he's willing to help us or not. If he isn't, we're going to have to find somebody else, because I still think the problems exist.
Uh-oh, that's what I was going to say. They do, oh, and that's the best they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I agree. I, I mean, I think, I just had, had those conversations.
And I mean, Jim was nice enough to come out and spend that Saturday with us. I didn't know if he's too busy to be able to take on this project to get us to the point where we need to be so we can figure out who the different providers going to be for the IT contract.
And we haven't been totally aggressive in trying to track him down, so... But we also, at the same time, should be channeled out of the, and then you've already contacted the municipality. It's like going to have IT services contracted, so we have an idea of who's out there.
The only reason I say it is, is when we originally started talking about this in the spring, we were like, okay, well, we're going into the summer months. Now we're going into the holidays.
Right.
So, you know, we don't really want to wait till January, February again before we try to get it. Right, exactly. You know, all the circles, all, it's going to come around again.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
Alright. Fuck all the door. Okay. That easy.
Can I, before we leave then the town?
Sure.
And, and I assume that there's already been some groundwork that's been done in terms of some of the communities and just what sort of contract they have in hand, because you've, you've been looking at such things. I beg your pardon?
They've conducted a lot of, um...
That you've got four of us, okay, good. So, to your, to your point, there's already been some groundwork done and research, but, I assume. Alright, thank you.
And the problem is the issues that persist with providing the air now.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. I remember when it all, it was all initiated, and we have, uh...
Transferration status? The, um, is it, is it, is that executive session? Did you assign any of the board?
No, I don't, I think that...
But that's...
That should only be executive session.
Okay. Sweet.
You don't, not going to executive session?
Not yet, not yet.
Uh, proposed ordinance for cat and dog breeders?
If you saw my email, then I'll patch that net, the minutes. I think that, um, because of the other place, and there's really not been a rush to have a cat and dog breeders permitting of ordinance. I think the best thing to do is wait to decide on what the fee schedule is going to be for the other part of the, um, the study committee. Just do it once, it's that, of course. Because Lynn, it's not really an issue with cats and dogs being bred next to a vet.
Not that I'm aware of.
You want to leave this on the agenda, or you want to...
Yeah, oh, no, definitely. That way we'll, we'll know that.
Soon it'll, soon it'll need to be addressed.
Okay. So move on to the regional school district finance committee, Frank?
Um, so Lynn has gone back and forth with Robyn Syria. And unfortunately, there has not been a date we've been able to nail down. So my suggestion is, um, that we see if we can find out for three, find three proposed dates after the eighteenth of the month, because that's when the school committee meets.
Okay.
And if we can figure possibly a date tonight... And if we can figure out possibly a date tonight, Lynn can contact the school committee, and then we can get it on their agenda for the eighteenth. So, if we can figure out a date that we're all available, then we can make sure that that's scheduled available. Problem is, it's, unfortunately, it's not like a meeting that we have when it's in our budget season, even though that's actually right around the corner. It's the same type of setup where it's beyond this meeting with the school committee and the board of councils. So, right after the eighteenth, everybody could please check their calendar and find out what year we're going to go to this.
Now, does the entire council, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they will all. Yeah, they don't have social life? Not, uh, not Monday work for me.
Thirty-two minutes, that's a shot for me.
No Monday work? Good.
Tuesdays are bad for you, Dan?
Let's see, anything in the week of the twenty-second or the twenty-third?
Okay, so how about the twenty-fourth? Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
I don't know if I should let the post it, if they start.
Well, maybe not the week.
Right.
Right, so the whole point is, is that we'll at least get on their agenda for the eighteenth.
Yep. I thought we were meeting with Sam, we could say from the twenty-fourth on, pretty much? What do you guys?
We're pretty well open.
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
From the twenty-fourth on?
Yeah.
Except for the November meeting and the election and, right?
Probably the Halloween.
Probably not Halloween.
All right, we'll care so, sorry, guys. How's you guys doing?
Yeah, I did.
So good.
I don't do trick or treats.
Spend it on that.
Okay.
That's almost as important as Christmas.
Spring. All right, so, uh, send those dates to them, see if you can pick one, that is on the agenda again.
Yeah, I'll, I'll type email, Wes Greenwich, get some dates, nail some dates down.
Okay. So moving on to Garden of Road issues? Yes, um, we have, listen here, I don't know if you know, ask him to speak, I don't know. Uh, we have Steve also, I visited the site today, I went down to Garden Road, I don't know if Danny had went down there also, and, uh.
I know, I know Liz wanted to speak, please come up, Liz.
I'd like to come up there.
Yeah, me and Ray are deaf.
My thinking about this actually, Neil, right?
Do I address the audience, or you?
Yes.
Okay, um, my question is, why has it taken so long? I really appreciate that it apparently worked, it started this morning, I haven't been home yet, so I don't know if it was all completed, but it just, it's very frustrating that I had to write a letter and be, you know, demanding something get done when at all the meeting agendas that I've checked since March, Garden of Road issues was on the agenda, and what was discussed was, oh, it's gonna happen anytime now, and as soon as it dries up, and real soon, and real soon, and real soon, if you look at all the different quotes of every month, why did it take this? Why is it so hard to just, you know, get this drainage situation? I, I know, it's just me, it's just the one house that's affected, because it's not paved in front of my house, so my driveway washes out when, when the water comes down, but, but, I don't know, I just don't understand why it took so long.
Okay.
Do you collect this, process that?
Well, I can, we've been working on the New London Turnpike, um, like over five hundred residents travel every day, trying to get that prepped, um, that's, sort of held us up this summer, between that and the weather. That project's still ongoing, I mean, we lost today, but due to yesterday's weather, this was a perfect schedule day for that particular project, because it was a one-day job, and it is completed, for now, until the next phase upgrade of the road. And maybe some adjustments, but the drain is in.
You, you're talking about the one-day project.
On Garden Road.
Young ladies.
Yeah, it's completed.
So it was a one-day project that was promised in March, and we were waiting for the dry season, which has already passed, and I just, so I just want.
It's still here for Rhode Island.
We're a hundred and forty percent above average rainfall this season, and we were last month, and I checked with Noah, and now we were sixty-five percent of average for May, June, and July, so they were all dry. And this was an agenda item all these months, so I'm just surprised that it took so much, and, you know, but, is it fixed, is it?
Complete.
Okay, and it, it doesn't bother the people in Richmond that we're draining all the water?
They were notified.
What?
They were notified.
Okay.
It's the same amount of water that's been coming down the hill.
Hopefully, it's all gonna work, and then my final question is, um, what is the plan for this road? Is, is part of the delaying of something to do with a plan to pave it or something, is there some? Because the New London Turnpike, I don't remember seeing that on an agenda anywhere, but, but that's being paved right now, right?
It's been on the capital program for years.
Oh, so what's the plan for Garden of Road at this point?
No, probably, unless the council.
Is there no plan to pay?
Well, that, the capital plan and road improvements are approved on a three-year rolling basis, so at this time, it is not on the three-year plan. So when the next capital plan comes up, and the council looks at what are the roads that are gonna be improved, changed, modified, that, at that time, that's where something could be added to it. But right now, Garden Road is not on the capital.
And when would that come up for change?
The V.
That, that doesn't get remanded, the next foundation.
Not this coming fiscal default, it'll be a year from January.
And then I just want to know if, and that I had concerns about the equipment constantly, when they're, when they do work on the road, they turn around my driveway, my other driveway, and there's always.
I'm already telling my guys not to turn around your driveway.
All right, and the last thing then is, if I'm having trouble with my driveway washing out, if there's a problem with this drain or something, do you just want me to call you?
That'd be the easiest way.
But, okay, okay. Thank you.
Moving on to permitting and implementation processes, already discussed. Moving on to the other side to it.
So we went live today, um, the system's up, and, you know, contractors and the inspectors can start using it. I mean, inspectors can sit down at a computer and log on anywhere, home here, and start filling in the permits, you know, the status of the permits, they can start answering, um, as of today. Uh, the iPads are just for when they're out on the site, but they can log in from home and update the permits.
And when they hear on Wednesdays, where they could, if they have issues that.
It's good, they have their computer and a laptop.
So they can work on it here if they haven't had a chance to.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm just thinking.
If they want to check on the status of one or some permits, they can go in and check, if you don't want to.
And then Lori's Ag, and that can access it as well, so she knows.
Yes, yeah, yeah, because it's things that she has to go in and check, update.
Uh, moving on to J, animal shelter study committee reports. We did have the work session two weeks ago. Uh, give us some ideas, is there anything we wish to discuss tonight or as well? Maybe move the basketball court. I'd like to make an easy one.
I've got some little change, but just give me a second, I got a client. So, out of some of the items that we discussed, uh, I looked at towns with the same demographics as ours with regards to what they were charging for licenses, because we considered that, possibly increasing that. We're right in the medium range, so we're the medium, the low range. There are towns that charge as much as eleven dollars if your pet is unneutered. And some of the other different communities, for instance, um, South Kingston, for, for example, actually has a more expensive licensing fee, but a less expensive late fee, whereas our late fee is twenty-five dollars if you don't have the animal licensed by the first of June.
Okay.
And that depends on the town, but once you look at all of the criteria in each different town, when you take into consideration what they charge for a license, what they charge for a late fee, when the dog has to be licensed by, um, if it was spayed or neutered, so on and so forth, we're pretty much right there. So, I, I don't really think that that should be changed.
Okay.
Now, that doesn't mean that I don't think we should consider increasing the cost of adoption fees, and I'm still looking into that.
Okay.
Um, like I said before, when we had the, the work session, um, you know, you've got several different types of categories, you've got people that want to get purebred pets, that obviously most likely aren't gonna get them from a shelter, they're gonna get them from a feeder.
Yep.
So, they're prepared to spend whatever it is that they want to spend for that particular breed, all right? A lot of the animals that are winding up, not only in Exeter, but in other shelters, are typically older animals, or they're modelers, they're mixes. Despite that fact, if you go online and, and you try to adopt a dog either through the SPCA, or Pet Finder, or any of these other portals on the internet, usually most of the adoption rates are starting at two hundred dollars and going up, which is, you know, we're only charging seventy-five, right, for a dog?
Right.
So, I think that's something that we should be definitely looking at.
Okay.
In my opinion, and I agree with what the study committee and Deena said with regards to, it may dissuade certain people to adopt, so usually what you find online is, if it's an older animal, in other words, like if it's more than five or six years old, obviously you can't justify spending that amount of money, but if it's a puppy, then it's a different situation. So it's kind of like you have to take it on a case-by-case basis, and most of the shelters, SPCA included, in, in, in Rhode Island and some of the other surrounding states, they, that's exactly what they do. So if the animals, right, if the animals are younger, they actually have, and this is something that we probably should allow Deena to set the price, in other words, where it's seventy-five dollars now, no matter what the dog is, right?
Yep.
Doesn't matter whether it's a puppy, or whether it's twelve years old with all kinds of medical issues, you know what I mean? So that's something that we need to look at to try and amend, and consider whether or not we might give Deena the latitude to be able to set that.
So there could be a fee schedule that's in discretion.
Right, exactly, yeah, exactly.
Something, something maybe that could be explored.
Right, because I know that's how some of the other shelters look at it.
Right, less than two years old, this price.
Right.
Two to ten, this price, or over ten, or with health issues, that price.
Right, right, exactly. And then, then there's some shelters that, if it's, if it's a, if it's a senior dog and it has medical issues, a lot of times what the shelter does is the shelter only passes on, um, let's say the municipality accumulated two hundred dollars, for instance, in medical costs to bring the dog up, with regards to have it legal with its shots, have it made, neutered, have it spayed, so on and so forth. They usually pass that on to the person, but then what they do is they don't charge an adoption fee, because they want the dog to get placed, so it's an older dog, it has a history of medical records. You charge them what the cost that what the municipality had a pet, excuse me, municipality had to spend to get the dog healthy, but then you don't charge them an adoption fee.
Okay.
So I think there's a lot of room there to, to change it out.
Okay.
Because right now, we're absorbing most, if not all, the costs of the, the medical on, on the animals, depending on what they are.
Right, I think most of these fees from right can or set by ordinance, they're not.
Orderment.
Yeah, right.
So we have to create an ordinance, public hearing the works.
Right. And I think, I think it will be worth our time to do that.
And just redo the whole, because if we're looking to add the cat breeders and the dog breeders.
They're a hundred dollars a piece, so unmuted cat, one of the dogs, instead of breeding, it's a hundred dollars.
So maybe if we, we incorporate all that together at one big.
Maybe that's where we're at, maybe we need to revise the ordinance.
That, I'm glad, I'm glad that you said that, to have Deena involved too.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
That's a good thing, that's a good.
Yeah, well, I mean, she has to have discretion, she has to have discretion about what she thinks would work and what wouldn't work.
That's good, frankly.
But I think the flat, I think the flat rate right now, we're kind of, we're, I shouldn't.
You, you want.
For the lack of a better word, we're not really, we're not doing ourselves, we're not doing ourselves any service. Because I think there's a demand out there, because if there wasn't, there would still be plenty of dogs down there, they wouldn't be going out the door.
Right.
So.
Great, so the next step is we write the ordinance.
I, I, I would start, I would start there, yeah. Good.
You, you want to say anything, Steve, at all?
No, we're fine, so we've got the work session or whatever, not the thought.
Okay.
There's too much to go over now.
Right.
Yep, there is.
Yeah, I agree.
See, a lot of good stuff came from the study committee, it's good, and, you know, and we spoke about it at the work session, with Deena too, so, you know, helping, so on and so forth, so, it's a good thing.
I didn't consider the basketball court, I suppose we could talk about that, like at the beginning of that, and talk to Steve. Of the obvious, I mean, Steve already mentioned that we can repurpose the asphalt, so it wouldn't be a matter of just moving the fencing.
No, we, we leave the fencing there and repurpose.
Well, you are gonna leave the fencing.
Everything but the two basketball, uh, units, we pull that.
It becomes a dog run.
Right, and then it becomes a, a paved outside dog run, that way there's, mud, and snow issues are a lot less.
Okay.
We'll do a review tour of the, um, that came out of the financial town meeting, so we might have to take a look at the resolution, because that was the only one time that somebody brought forward a line up from the audience, from the public, specifically stating that, that we built.
We're gonna relocate it, though, so we would still have one.
We just gotta move it a little more.
Move it over to the other complex.
See if the ordinance, I mean, the resolution, how specific it was, just in case, and then contracts were submitted, it's just a, yeah.
Can't wait, as the governing body just change it?
Well, it's not like we want to get rid of the basketball court, we just want to move it.
Just be careful.
And we're only gonna.
Just across the, it's on the same property, actually.
Right, just move it farther down, right?
It's.
Close to Reynolds Field.
Right next to the baseball field.
Inside of it, around it, or what?
Well, you have to drive on, on the south road to get to it, it's one difference.
Can you match the Red Field with me?
Huh?
I'll look at the resolution, see what's there. Next to Red Field?
Reynolds Field.
I, I, no, no, but I'm saying where Red Field is, is that where we would?
Yes, right out of the Heimright Field.
Okay. So Ken's gonna look into it, just make sure there's no, any language in the ordinance that passed it, so, for the future. All right, so move on to K, the application for amendment to zoning map ordinance, Cox Communication thinks the applicant, eight forty-three, Slocum Drive, Exeter, Rhode Island, flag meeting one, lots nine and eleven. This was a communication we received in August of thirty-six, so we sent it to the planning board for an advisory opinion, and, I'm like, I read the opinion, and they said in the first line that they considered approving the advisory opinion, but I'm saying they actually approved the book running change, unless I missed the advisory.
I think you looked for the conclusions.
Yeah. That's interesting.
Yeah. It is consistent with the basic principles and provisions of the comprehensive plan, so they're just saying that's in line with it, or meaning it correctly.
You must be from Cox. Yeah, that's right.
Alan Shore.
Yeah, Alan Shore here from, here from representing Cox, that's right, they, they recommended, recommended approval, but they're referring it back to the council for, for your consideration, um, and we just need to schedule a public hearing before you.
Does anybody from the council have any questions?
I got one question, you're at nine hundred and ninety-nine kilowatts. Nine nine nine. Can't make it to one megawatt. I, that's a great question, I don't know why it's nine nine nine, I mean, versus one. Because when it kicks into one megawatt, which is. One meg, one megawatt versus nine nine? Then we get five grand, five thousand more dollars out of you per year. Is that the difference? When I read it, that's what I thought, there's a state, there's a state statue out there? I, I, if, if that's in there, that's ridiculous, so, I mean, so, well, you know, one mega, one kilowatt for five thousand dollars? Yeah, come on. There, there's a state statue when, for a megawatt, that, when I saw that, I figured that's what they were doing, so. Are you the only one from the solar company, you're Cox? No. Just me? Just you, okay.
And I don't have that statue with me tonight. It's in the pile on my desk, there is a state law.
So what hap, what's, what's, what's your, cuz what's the, what kicks in at one megawatt, is it?
Yeah, the host towns get five thousand dollars per year of the lease for a megawatt.
We'll, we'll look into that, okay.
I don't know if Office of Energy Resources has it on their webpage.
One megawatt?
Do you have the statue? I, it's in a stack somewhere on my desk. He might have it, he can ref, he can reference it, yeah.
That might be a condition that was approved.
Can I just say something? Gene, if you wanna.
I mean, we're not talking a lot of, a big jump in size, probably a dozen panels, maybe?
Oh, it's not a lot?
No, it's not a lot, a lot, so.
So then, we will be talking about a public hearing then.
I thought I was saying we have to schedule a public hearing for the zone change anyway, correct?
Yeah, so I appreciate the.
When I saw that, I figured that's why they did it.
I, that's, I don't, I wanna find out. You know, that, that's, that's, I'll bring that question back to the, back to the engineers and company.
So I move that we schedule, um, the application for a public hearing at our November meeting.
Second, any discussion?
Well, un, under discussion, yeah, I would just like to reference for the, for the minutes of tonight's meeting, the six-page advisory opinion that we were given by the planning board, which is the basis on which this motion surfaces. Excuse me, and I, and I would just like to, to read, I think there was some interested people here in, uh, and I think for the record, and I'm not sure you wanna quote all this, but at all, but I'd like to reference the conclusion. I'd like to reference here the conclusion, and it says this. The planning board has carefully considered the proposed solar facility as a kind sign along with the request to change the zoning map in order to facilitate that project. For all the reasons stated in this advisory opinion, the planning board finds that the proposal to change the zoning designation of the identified lots for the purpose of reasonable scale solar installation is consistent with the basic principles and provision of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. Planning board recognizes the need to provide for a tax base other than residential development.
Can you make him a copy of this?
Can I, can I just speak, please? When this can be accomplished, while still recognizing and maintaining the town's rural character and unique sense of place consistency with the comprehensive plan will follow. Planning board considers solar facilities less than five acres to be potentially viable options to achieve this goal if those facilities are appropriately cited, regulated, and scaled to the surrounding area. I think the fact that, that this communication was presented to us is significant, given so much of what's going on before us. Thank you for, Kevin, for letting me read that as part of the record.
Can you make him a copy?
You can have that, that's okay.
What is it, the, it's not the rec, is it the?
The reference is the state law.
Oh, it does, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, so we're moving on to the reports of officers and boards. Uh, Ray, Public Works.
Public Works, you have completed on God and the Road, one day thing, what time to start that?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty. A drainage drain.
It's a catch basin in a crossover culvert to the existing drain.
Yep.
Which will catch how the water comes down both ditches and runs it into the system. So it'll just be going like it always used to in the past, with the two drains that were on the side. So now we just have a crossover and a catch basin. So more ease of cleaning the system. Uh, we cleaned it today, the crossover's lateral's are good, so we'll, uh, pre-grade the road, probably after tomorrow's rain showers. And we'll be in good shape until we make another decision on that particular road. Other than that, we did a lot of brush cutting, uh, working on the turnpike. We have the drainage upgrades there in place, the culvert's been repaired, re-cared, widened basically, uh, for, to put a shoulder on the road. Most of the shoulders have been re-sloped, um, to allow for vehicles to open their doors instead of hitting into the banks if they pull over. So that's all just about ready for, uh, compaction and asphalt on the turnpike. So that should be pretty good.
Is that something you anticipate within the next few week, a week or two?
I, I can't say exactly what the day will be, I, I'll let you know, but I mean.
Sometime.
Before the end of November, I'm pretty confident, so before the frost goes in the ground. And then we also have two other small asphalt projects at the same time. It'll be done within the same two-day, three-day period.
Steve, just two, two questions, please. The, the work that we've heard so, so much about over the months, do you, do you think that what you did today should hopefully mitigate the issue that the city lady has been?
Yeah, so keep it maintained like we always have it, but it should be in good shape for a long time.
All right, I wish you well with that. But the other question I have is about the new, uh, the new highway, the turnpike that will become a highway. I have a, I have an acquaintance that uses it frequently and, and as I have on occasion. And it's so potentially dangerous and when you come to, can't see.
We'll be putting up approved signage, stop aheads.
You, you will do.
Speed limits.
That's gonna be quite a.
Road signs, so every project, they always, we're complete asphalt.
It's such a danger and, and this.
One thing I can't control is the speed. And we keep them narrow, or we keep our roads at twenty feet instead of the average twenty-two, twenty-three. And that twenty feet makes a big difference on speed in our, it's been, it's a proven thing. Wayne Reynolds Road was the first time we tried that, and it reduced the speed. Sunderland Road and Hopkins Hill, same, the twenty-foot measurement is like a magic number for road width in the country. It reduces, once, especially once the vegetation comes back, it truly reduces, uh, how you feel driving, and it reduces your speed. Now, it's a marginal reduction, but it does seem to be, uh, successful. We've had good luck with it on the, the roads we've upgraded in the last few years.
But considering that danger is what I call intersection with one oh two, you did say there would be some.
There'd be the proper signage for stops, stop ahead, bright sides on the poles, things like that.
I, I assume that, but I hope the need to.
Yeah, it's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit.
Well, no, I know.
I can enforce the speed.
No, no, I understand, I've just been asked, I, my answer has been, I was sure you were gonna address the highway department with, with improved signage, please.
Transfer station over.
I was gonna, right, we are.
I just wanted to ask a question, Steve. Steve, I don't know if it's me, I don't know if it's the time, the year, um, does it seem to you that you have to dispatch the guys out more often lately than you have in the past for the guys to litter? Seems to be a lot of litter on the roads. And I know some of it is from people that aren't covering their loads when they're on their way to the transfer station that comes up.
We haven't.
Some of it is just people driving down the road, you know, they throw their trash outside.
Yeah, we haven't had a ton of small litter complaints. The, the larger debris, uh, like a TV or mattress, a standard, I haven't had any real increase in that either. The worst places we have for the small litter is, uh, Tenrod and Gardner and Town Hall Road. And I contribute that to the trailer, the RV park. For whatever reason, that, those three roads have more litter on them than most. And then, yes, one oh two catches quite a bit, I, I pick up a few packs now and again myself.
Yeah.
Uh, on dump days, on transfer station days.
Right.
I do see that. Small litter, we haven't had a ton of complaints from the residents, but it does have its cycle.
I think people, at least I do, I don't know, and I think most of my neighbors anyway, we don't complain, we just pick it up ourselves.
I know the Boy Scouts used to a lot of it.
Right.
I think they had some issues with insurance or something.
Yeah.
Concern.
But I know, like you said, there's certain roads.
Certain roads, we notice it all the time.
Especially from the western side of town to the eastern side of town. You got students coming and using certain roads to go over Route Two, down Route Thirty-Eight.
Trips Corner and Mail Road catch a lot more than.
Yeah, right.
What Yago Valley would catch, for instance.
And obviously, just like speed, you can't enforce that, so.
It's just something that's very different.
I, I, it just, I seem to notice a lot more lately, and I know that you dispatch the guys out to clean it up as often.
Occasionally, if it's a, a problem for traffic, yes, we will.
Yeah.
If we get the call, a lot of times we don't get the call until it's too late, minutes. But, uh, the biggest problem we're having lately is the trees. Again, you know, they're coming back around.
Right.
These little windstorms, um, we haven't, we've been out four times in the last two weeks for trees.
Yeah, a lot of branches are coming off trees that got damaged by gypsy moths, I know.
Gypsy moths, uh, previous windstorms from last winter. And I've said that, we have noticed a, a uptake in the last month.
Could you speak about the, I know we've had a letter, I think in my packet, about the rejuvenator from Lake, and they were worried about the product going into the water, can you just speak to that?
The product works exactly the way it's supposed to work. As far as the product going in the lake, we put it down at point oh tenths per gallon per square yard. Uh, point oh five, I'm sorry, point oh five, not point five. Uh, that's not a lot of material per square yard, okay? It's, it soaks right into the existing asphalt, well, in that case, chip seal and asphalt. And all the roads that we did on that, in that program that day was, uh, Wolf Rock Road, Glen Rock Road, Industrial Drive, Teft Hill Trail, Birch Drive, and West Shore Drive, were all sprayed the same day. We didn't have zero trouble, basically, on any other road other than, a few residents called, that's what, what we were doing. Now, did not have complaints on the process, just what passed, they hadn't seen it. Moon Lake, I'm making accusations that I can't prove. I've looked at all the outflows, I looked in all the catch basins, I looked in the runoff's on the sides of the road. The grass is still growing, it hasn't damaged anything. It's a long way through the systems at that amount of material that absorbs into the sys, right into the road. Now, rain washes everything off the road, everything from your vehicle, you know? They have boats in the lake, they pop a gas line on a boat, it's gonna, they're gonna show in the water. So this, and this product realistically doesn't show a film on it in the water, you know? It's, it's, that's why it's strange, but they made accusations themselves.
Which product is this, that you used?
Hmm?
Which product was it?
It's a, basically, it's a resin.
Was it that rejuvenator?
The rejuvenator, right, it's the one that goes into the, and reactivates the road. It puts the life back in the road, a little bit of flexibility so the cracks seal up, and it prolongs the life so that we don't spend the money down the road. It just prolongs the cost of repairing the road. It keeps the road in excellent shape. When you seal the cracks back up, it tightens them up, and the water doesn't penetrate or runs off like it's supposed to do. So I know I read all the stuff they did, I, I sent them an email, I sent them some product data. I find it very hard to believe in that there's, that it was that product that caused the problem because it's not hazardous waste, it's not a hazardous product, really, you know? So if you have a very technical question, these gentlemen right here are from the company. Uh, they're engineer and, uh, one of their sales associates, they can answer any technical question you have on the product. It's that you're, uh, minded, because they can answer questions that I can't about the product specific.
Well, we've got, I think the letter, the correspondence I saw in the package, people worried about it going into the, how environmentally safe it was, and they saw it going into the lake, that's.
There's no way they physically saw a stream of this stuff going in the, in the lake, no, no possible way.
I have a picture here if you wanna see it.
It's, it's not the product itself, it might have been other products that run off, but it can't be, this product doesn't, won't travel that far.
Are you saying that the product could have lifted some other stuff?
Of course, soaking rain on one oh two, I get it in my yacht all the time.
Is everybody in the council have a question for the gentleman Steve regarding the rejuvenating product?
No, Steve kinda covered it.
Steve, what is the sound on Glen Rock, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
How's your road look?
Good.
We, we skipped the first little section because that's in, needs other work. I know I hadn't heard from you when I was, uh, saying this about Frank didn't say it, but Wolf Rock, it tightened that up. We only did the, the intersection of Wolf Rock too, cuz there's a section there that needs to go on the capital improvement list. Industrial Drive, uh, Teft Hill Trail, they're just roads that were prolonging the life so that we can not have to touch them for ten more years. You know, that's, and it seems aligned, your road, I was over there yesterday, uh.
It took a couple of weeks, it's, it seems, for it to sink in.
It, it took a little time to, you know, to go, but it, it's, it's like, it's the same product that's sort of in the road.
Right.
Is the whole point of it, you know, it's, it's what is missing that the sun is taken away from.
Yeah.
The road, what keeps it flexible so that it, it doesn't crack. And it's, it's the product that they're taking out of liquid asphalt, I think I already explained this to you when we was doing it before. If they leave it in the liquid asphalt, our roads would last longer to start with, but they're taking it out. But that's on a total different level. You know, you can't even spec it in the ass, liquid asphalt, so.
I know some roads won't be going on, the A Brook.
Kyle, you have a question?
Well, only, Steve, I, um, is this a, is this a new, was this somewhat of a new approach that you were trying?
It's not new.
I mean, that you.
First time I've used it.
First time that you've used it. I seem to remember that discussion.
Right, I went and looked at it in several different other communities where, and talked to their directors and got the information on a local level, and they're very, very happy with the process and outcome.
I'm sorry, I thought, one question, I read, I read quickly, I thought, was it someone asked? It might have been you folks up from West Shore Drive, I don't know.
Yeah, we have some questions.
Well, I was just, I was just gonna ask, uh, that I thought I'd read that someone had asked if there was any other phase that follows, but, but the answer is no at this point.
The phase that would follow, immediate follow was sand. That we put the sand on, but that helps fill in the cracks and helps hold it all, and it gives you this protection.
Which is what was done?
Yes, we did that. Matter of fact, we did it on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday.
Of this past week?
No, Labor Day.
No, of two, okay.
It was applied on the Tuesday, after Labor Day, and then we, we treated it, standard that day, following day, and then two more days, including Saturday. And the, what the speed limit is, shouldn't be no reason for anybody to slide, slip, if you go the speed limit.
Did you guys have questions?
Yeah, the resin.
Just to name an address for the record.
Courtney Griffin, seventy-five West Shore Drive. Um, we had difficulty, the substance did not soak in, and we're requesting reports of the process and the sanding and what the schedule was supposed to be versus what actually happened. We had difficulty with our children's sneakers covered in sticky substances. It's now all up in our driveways, we were not able to walk our pets. Um, and we do water testing on our lake every week to monitor the quality, and we now have standing oil in our lake, and we do have picture proof. And that was not there before this, and it did not soak in at all, it just ran all over the road and all up in our driveways, and it's gotten our carpets and our dogs, and it was just a disaster, it was a mess. And my son, I myself, like my son was complaining just about the stench cuz he walks home every day from the bus stop. So it's, I don't, we're just asking for more information, um, as a neighborhood on a whole, and we did not see sanding after it was done until there was an accident on our road on West Shore. We didn't see sanding done until after that happened.
I can speak to that. The day of the accident, I went by within, how like forty-five minutes? And I, again, I, I know there was an accident on that day, they said the road was slick. I did the speed limit, it is like, what, ten miles or fifteen miles an hour?
Is Dean actually there?
Oh, I had no problem. So I don't know if the person was going too fast and lost control, I mean, I don't, wasn't there, so I can't speak to it, but I do know within an hour, the road was not slick, and then I did see one of these guys out sanding.
But that was almost a week after the substance was put down?
But in that, in that, it wasn't slick at that time.
So we're just asking. Yeah, not, but we're asking for what the sanding requirements were, like what the schedule was supposed to be versus what happened.
I mean, it sounds like what you're looking for is a freedom of information request. Um, you can process that with the town clerk's office, enumerate exactly what you're looking for. And then at that point, Lynn can get it to you or refer it to the appropriate department. Do we charge for those, or?
We can provide records, we can, we can answer questions. We can provide records.
No, I can tell you, it was sent the day of and the day after, so that would be Tuesday, Wednesday, it was sent Friday and Saturday. All of the roads were, so we did not just show.
We're just asking for the documentation, that's all. And then also like an explanation, explanation of what the instructions are. And then also, like, an explanation, explanation of what the instructions are for this and, you know.
Like I said, you can submit a Freedom of Information Act request, um, there's usually a cost of that, and then we can provide what we have to you.
I was just wondering if you, when you walk.
It's more for the council to, to speak to us than for the, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. When, when, when the spray came through, we weren't sure what it was. We knew that it smelled, we knew that it stuck to our shoes, we knew that, like, I mean, even a week later when I was going to get the mail, my shoes would still feel that sticky something, right? So I don't know what it is. Um, but if it's a product that lifts things out of the road that are sticky, but it itself isn't, maybe we should look at, um, where, where you're gonna put it. Again, around watershed areas, around places where there's runoff. And I know that water's just gonna go, but.
Where's your name, sir?
Richard Griffin. Seventy-five West Shore Drive.
So the gentleman in the blue shirt, or you, can you comment at all? I know we've, we heard it's slippery a lot, rains and little, they're slippery, Jim. It did rain for a few days after it was put down. Basically, the process, it's a, as Steve had said, it's a rejuvenator, it's a penetrate and seal. What it does is it restores the asphalt, so combines the asphalt with the aggregate to re- reactivate the bond between the particles. So it's a penetrate and seal, just like you're sealing your driveway, except it actually brings back life that you're losing from oxidation and aging of the pavement. It's a petroleum, a, a multiplied petroleum, so it's a water-based, it's a water soluble. It's a non-toxic substance, it's not even listed on any of the RECR sites or any of the hazmat sites because there's, there's no constituents to it under those degrees. We put it down at a half point zero five gallons per square yard. Along that one, I think it's about a mile, mile-long West Shore Drive, there's only six catch basins within that area. So even the amount, even if it was sprayed into the catch basins, you're talking less than a tenth of a gallon for the entire mile. We went out after we got the reports, we did not see anything in any of the drainage ditches, any residuals that went past the edge of the roads, all the grass and all the vegetation along the sides of the roads. They're all lively, there's no dead grass. Uh, basically, this material goes in, within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, it's all cured. It continues curing to the life of the product for two to three years down the road. The more you drive over it, the more it act, the more it penetrates and it just restores it because it's, just like asphalt, it's a flexible system. What it does, it brings back the flexibility of the asphalt or the substance on it. And that's what's protecting your road, to give you life to the road. And as far as it washing off, this product's been around for fifty years. It's mostly used in California as a dust control, they spray it down in California on levees and reservoirs and things like that, it's non-toxic. We've never seen a sheen on any water from it. Uh, like any seal, when you're sealing a road, it's just like a new pavement. All the gas and all the oils come dripping off your cars as you're driving by. Since the road's now sealed, all that is gonna wash out because now you've got a sealed pavement, so it's not going into the pavement anymore. But.
So you're saying if somebody was changing their oil or something on the road, instead of it seeping into the road, that oil is now.
Yeah, just even trucks and cars, you, you always got dripping oils, you got dripping oils, you got gas, people filling line bowls, things like that, that stays on the roads, that's not going in there, that will wash off in a rainstorm.
Okay.
What is your name?
Jim Heneberry with Felix Ave Marine O Company.
It's got a last name.
P G N E, B U R Y. Got a card? Just a.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any further questions from the council?
No, I think I'm all set. President.
Uh, we'll take the line to the transfer station.
Can I have a second card?
Can we submit our pictures?
There is a couple.
Um, if you mail them to the council, they, you can get communication for our next month. Uh, that's how you can submit.
I, I do have one more thing on the trans, on public works, if you don't mind, you'll like this one. The state of Rhode Island, D O T, bid road salt, um, through a reverse auction system. Now, if you don't understand that, I can explain it real simple. They put out a price, it said seventy-five dollars. Anybody that goes below that, and it just keeps going down, so that's the reverse auction. And the two vent, about four vendors started the system, um, Morton and a few of the other guys. Uh, they got down to fifty-six twenty-five and everybody stopped reducing. Uh, and Morton was the one that was at fifty-six twenty-five per ton. The state accepted that bid, uh, the city of Providence, now they're a big user of salt, I mean, I'm sure you're aware, didn't like that number. So they went out to private bid themselves to seal bid system. They were, they retrieved all their bids. Their bid was forty-seven seventy-five, which is eight dollars and fifty cents a ton less than the D O T state bid. It was done legally, um, I have all the documentation. The city and the vendor are both allowing all municipals to ride that bid. And that equals up for our usage, equaling last year, uh, fifty-nine hundred and fifty dollars is what we would save over last year's cost right out of the gate on what we paid for our initial round of salt that lasted us the entire winter, last year. That we have that on the table, I mean, it's not that I need permission, I just want you to be aware that we can do this and save the taxpayers almost six thousand dollars. And if we have a bad winter, that just goes into more, obviously more products, but, um, so they're, they're putting a brand-new stockpile and scale system in Providence. Now, they have a current one in, um, Fall River.
Champion Salt, right?
Champion Salt, you are correct. You're gonna see this as a, this is gonna pop up in a couple of weeks and you may know why, Frank, uh, who's gonna do it? I just wanted to give you the heads up, they just, just got the paperwork this morning. They, they delivered it to us this morning. But I've been talking to them for about a month, waiting for Providence to go through their, all their processes and get the award letter out. So that's all completed now, so we'll be able to save a little bit of money on salt this month.
And so, so it's what you anticipate probably doing?
Yes, I, there's no reason why I would spend another fifty-nine hundred and something dollars for no reason.
Which bid did the state pay?
They accepted Morton's, Morton's salt's bill at fifty-six twenty-five. And then the city, like I said again, the city didn't like that, and they use a lot of salt, I'm on, we ever will. Um, so they went out to private bid, but they did the wrong business, like we would do. And this is how it came out, uh, forty-seven seventy-five. It's at eight fifty a ton, cheaper through Champion than through one. So I had full intentions of buying the salt from Jim to save the taxpayers money. That's all for public works.
But it, but the fact that it's not on the state bid list?
It, it's, it's still a legal bid in the state of Rhode Island from a municipality, we can ride it legally.
Okay.
I got a couple, I'm sorry, I don't need to be on public works all night, but. We got, can't even talk. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, we're on ninety-five, a snowstorm. I see the salt truck and I see a plow truck behind the salt truck pushing the snow off the road. What is that all about?
Is it still snowing or has it stopped snowing?
They do that everywhere in Rhode Island.
But they call it burning the road, that's their catch phrase for it. It's, uh, basically, the, the salt goes down, it's, the granules are so big and it won't go into what we call solution, which is wet and melt fast enough. So D O T will put the granular salt down and then plow right behind to grind that salt into smaller crystals so it'll get into solution and work faster. That's the intent. Uh, I don't, I didn't say I agree with it, I just, that's what they're doing.
Okay.
And when are you scheduled to have the letters put on the S U P?
Yeah, probably a week or so.
A week or so, okay. Looks good though.
Oh, you have, have a vehicle?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm all done now.
All right, how about transfer station?
Transfer station, pretty well.
Everything's good?
Everything's good.
Okay.
Sticker sales are very brisk, so it's very good.
Uh, do you, I shouldn't, should I be signing the time cards?
You don't have to, no.
I don't have to, right? Because they asked me to do it, I kind of do it.
Yeah, you don't, no, you, you don't, no.
All right, no problem. I, I remember we talked about that before, though, all right. And as far as, um, animal shelter?
We went through the first round of training.
I'll go back to transfer station.
We did complete the first forty-hour class for the animal control. Um, so that was taken care of, everything was, and everyone graduated or passed with a ninety-five or better percentage average in the class. Very successful. So, and everything else down there is pretty good, down pretty good on cats, a few dogs, so.
I just need to ask too, I'd like to, um, I don't know if you want to bring this up, Frank, but. Communication number five, if I can read that into record, it's from, uh.
Oh, okay.
It said, uh, the person, uh, had said, it's Highland, I knew you don't make the rules, but I would like to complain about not being able to use the transfer station on Saturday, September first, when the permit says it's good until nine one eighteen, the last day should be okay to use. I just wanted to tell someone that I feel was wrong of the town to do so. I feel I should contact someone about this who I should have contacted, thank you, Kim Strickland. Um, my transfer station sticker runs out August thirty-first, is that correct?
The ordinance says August thirty-first.
Correct, I just wanted to read that into record to get that out of the way.
Okay.
Frank?
No, I'm, just to reiterate, and when we talked about this last month, yeah, this was an issue of contention this year. And maybe we should consider allowing, you know, the guys down at the transfer station to allow residents to come in. You know, one meets grace, and we can cross that bridge next year when we, when we get there, so.
I think you just maybe, I know it's signed, student reading wire on the first there, but it's one of those, would you see it week in and week out, it's just background? Maybe just, they have that little trifle sign, maybe we put that, don't forget to renew starting in August, we start putting more signage out about it?
We, do, we do, we put signs on the, on the railing and in the, in the glass area, in the glass enclosed area for new stickers, you know, we do.
Yeah, flash.
We put up three, at least three, and then we put up at all the public buildings.
Yep, all right.
We ran into trouble, Frank, I think, I'll tell you that's history, um, in the past with that grace period. And the grace period has started lasting three months and six months.
No, I get it.
That's, that was the dilemma.
Yeah, right.
So they said tighten it up, this is coming back quite a few councils now, and we, we tightened it up. And it has drastically put the sticker sales where they need to be to cover the expenses.
Yeah.
And that's ultimately the end result for that, is to not have this being a prolonged problem, which it turned into.
I can just say something else, I, I appreciate the two gentlemen down there who
I agree.
follow through with orders.
Yep.
And, and they know it. They, you know, they don't compromise.
Well, they have the rules.
You don't need to so, they know exactly what you're telling them and they carry it out.
Yeah.
So I, I commend them for doing that.
My son goes to the dump every Sunday, goes down there with four barrels of trash. He said he went there this past Sunday, by the time he emptied out one barrel, Sean had already emptied out the other three. Yeah, so, it's a work. They were kind of.
Um, as far as animal shelter, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was on it Sunday, not many cats.
No, were down.
Cats, man, a lot, a lot of cats have been adopted out.
All the kittens went just almost as fast as they come in, or as fast as we could get them, uh, out, so.
And I, I commended the volunteers before we, we read that letter, uh, when we had adopted this little, um, adopted, you know, uh.
Pointed.
So, um, so everything's doing fine, thank you, Kevin. Uh, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, Frank, tax, tax collector, you got a report?
So a couple of things, um, I don't know if anybody else in the council got contacted by a specific resident who had an issue paying his tax bill. Unfortunately, it's not on this month's agenda, but we will address it next month. I invited the gentleman to attend this evening, but I don't think he was able to make it. Um, so, this is an issue that we can obviously discuss next month with regards to that gentleman's concern. Um, beyond that, we all got, um, Kim's collection report. Uh, for the record, total collections for the month of September were two million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents. And all monies have been reported to the treasurer. She also goes on to say, speaks about the delinquent tax blocks that continue to be removed on a daily basis from the D M V. Last month, I spoke about the, where we were when we got to the state and the town of Exeter, because we're one of the few municipalities where you cannot register your car online yet. So evidently, there seems to be some issue in the software continually with what Kim has said with the D M V. I put a call in the D M V, I have not received the call back. I tried to reach out to Kim again, uh, today to talk about it, but she had to take a personal day today, so. Um, hopefully, I'll have more of a conclusive report with regards to the D M V situation next month. And that's it.
So I continue with school committee?
Yeah, the only thing, well, we pretty much touched on the regional school district finance committee, that was pretty much all I really had to report on that. So hopefully, when we can hear back from West Greenwich's availability after the, the twenty-fourth or after, we can set that meeting because I think it's important. To meet prior to going into the budget decision next year. Hanging on the council, obviously, I still think it's important, agree, so. That's all I have.
All right, Kyle, you have a tax assessment, sir?
Just, just a couple of thoughts, and you've seen Carrie's report. Uh, she continues to go out to do site visits because they process, um, changes that may be happening to properties regularly. Uh, but I, in the process of discussing this with her, she indicated that she does not go out to properties alone, which I've always, you always, I think, thought was much better than someone, that these good people go when they're visiting a property. And she's also created an identification tag or of some kind so that when they arrive on, on, on site, um, people know that they actually are here from the town of Exeter, which is a very good thing in the safety issue. And she also told me that she's, she stumbles across now and then some, some things that need to be addressed what she is in terms of assessments. Uh, and also, there's a note here that she makes that appeals must be filed by Friday, December seventeenth. And appeals of, of, of assessments. Thank you.
We also have matching sweaters, Cal, you can wear now.
Well, that's why I didn't, uh, I didn't, oh, oh, identify them even better.
Even better.
Good.
Kyle, you want to give the job report?
I, I don't have a report for you, but we do have a, a, a meeting, community people on Friday, so the next time we should be able to throw you in on any of the developments.
Dan, public safety.
We got some font here for that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been a pretty, uh, pretty active past couple of months, but, uh, moving forward, um, I've been in contact with, uh, all the dam owners. We're gonna be putting together a workshop, which we'll be inviting the council to, uh, attend. Rhode Island Emergency Management has changed the emergency action plan template that each owner is required to have. So we're gonna put together, uh, the intent of the workshop is to help, uh, the owners, uh, go through this process. Um, all, but one has said that they will attend, one is, uh, will not be attending. Um, uh, they are choosing to work on the plan themselves. Um, we're trying to do what we can to, to work with them. Um, right now, we've got thirty-eight active projects within the town that are involving some type of public safety or emergency management scope. But, um, trying to ensure that these plans are accurate and up to date is, uh, is gonna be my project, hopefully, that will conclude by the end of this year. Um, we've begun C P R training, um, with the town as part of a five-thousand-dollar grant that we obtained from the state on the opioid prices project. Our intent is to have A E D stations in all the public buildings, so that would be, uh, town hall, public works, the animal shelter, and the library. Public Works, the animal shelter, and the library. And the next phase of training would include, um, Narcan kits and then stop the bleed training, so then, uh, hemostatic agents and dressings for, uh, potential emergencies that could, uh, exist. Um, we're working closely with Rhode Island Disaster Management, um, to help us move this training along. Exeter Rescue has provided personnel as part of the grant, and we've, uh, already, uh, completed the first phase of the project with Public Works last week. Then Steve and his crew, they, uh, they did the training right off the bat, and they have an A E D in the cabinet already installed. Um, we'll be working with Lynn and the rest of the town agencies to, uh, have the training brought to the rest of the town employees, but the intent is that before the equipment is, uh, put in place, then at least twenty-five percent of the personnel in that building are at least trained on the equipment. I just- I just don't wanna blindly put something up without the training being in place, and then we'll have procedures there and that would cover everybody. Um, and then, uh, lastly, which is gonna follow when we do your communications, uh, we've got a pretty sizable grant, uh, award, but not actual money yet, from Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency, that we'll be discussing, uh, further. But for the most part, now we're just working on preparing for the winter storm preparations and, uh, whatever Steve needs to move forward. Same old.
That was easy. The, um, C P R training?
Yes.
It's for employees only?
No. Uh, the intent is, um, we actually are also partnering with Grange Initial, the grant is covering all the training. We'll open it up to town employees and their, um, their families if they would like. When we get to the library, that's when we're gonna, uh, open up and we'll have, um, my intent is to have four open C P R trainings. Um, if we can get to sixty people trained within the community with the equipment in place, um, we'll be listed as a heart-saver community. Um, basically, um, what that is, is a statistical, it's been statistically proven that with at least sixty members of your community trained, that the chances of you, if you were to have some type of cardiac event or some type of issue involving first aid, that you would have access to a first responder or a volunteer that would be able to provide or render aid and know what to do to at least be able to contact nine-one-one, be able to stop bleeding or to initiate C P R. Um, this is gonna be an expanding project, but, uh, that aspect of it, especially when I do the town employees, I always like to open up to the employees first, but because it's a grant, uh, the grant itself would be open up to the public. But I wanna make sure we do it systematically, because I don't wanna be in a position where if we were doing the training at Town Hall, all of a sudden I have a hundred people show up. Um, I- I would love to train every one of them, but I wanna make sure that we have the people and, uh, more importantly, the props in place, so, uh, we're not wasting anyone's time and, uh, and- and get the train to where it's needed.
You got the suscitation inning, is that the little body?
Um, we actually have something a little more, more, yeah, a little better than that.
Now, do- when you do this, is it Red Cross training?
No, American Heart, it'll be American Heart Association, yeah.
The problem we have, like in construction with OSHA, you can have that card in your pocket, OSHA comes on my job, if your card doesn't say Red Cross training...
Right.
It's null and void.
Rude.
Yeah.
I can't speak to that, but I...
Because I have to look at certified over a couple of years.
It's changed.
OSHA's rules have changed.
Yeah, I thought the OSHA rules have changed, but I will look into that.
It could've, they change every time Congress meets.
I know the guy to ask, and I'll try to get that answered.
But I gotta be honest with you.
Because I had to go down to the guild where they do the training at.
Well, I do it with Rhode Island Public Works Association, and we did a free training for Public Works employees in May at the Crown Plaza, and we- we did sixty-five Public Works employees for free through the association. And the, you know, our instructor said it was good on all projects.
It- it could've changed.
So I- I will ask if that, I didn't go to that training, because I knew we were gonna be doing the one with the town, but one of my employees did do the training, one of my guys, so I'll ask him what his card says, come on. And then I'll find out from the trainer if it's good on...
I think they're only good for two years, if I remember.
Two years.
Yeah, they're on two years.
They're all the same, yeah, this is.
Because you gotta do the first aid and the C P R.
Yeah, uh, ours is gonna be primarily C P R, and, uh, excuse me, thank you for, uh, in the A E D. Um, I just want the right training and the right tools, right training, I just don't want anybody... I mean, it, the most empowering part of the- the conversation is if a- if a five-year-old can be proficient in using this device within fifteen minutes of seeing it, then there isn't any reason why...
This is the defibrillator.
Yeah.
That's correct. It tells you exactly what to do.
Machine wash your retro results.
And it's more and more, it's recorded, um, it serves as a legal document. Um, and so far as with the training, uh, everybody that takes the appropriate training, has the certifications covered under the good Samaritan law, so, um, it's, that- that legal aspect of it, we're covered, and our medical direction is coming directly out of South County Hospital. Uh, and because Exeter Rescue is participating with us, and they're certified instructors, I'm not- I'm not concerned about that aspect at all. Whoever wants to learn, we're gonna get the training to them. We're able to get all the training to the Exeter West Greenwich High School, all the Alice training, all the active shooter training, right after Parkland, the entire district has been trained. This- this is, this should be a kickball. I'm having more issues with the- the emergency action place than I am, because give me this all day, all...
Thanks to five.
No problem, but I should say in fairness...
You can post it.
During- during the...
They can drag it up, or they can get some training.
Oh, yeah, during the course of this conversation, uh, the last, uh, the last agency has contacted me, and we're gonna be, the last dam association has contacted me, and we're gonna, we'll be meeting with them directly to help them get through, so... We're done.
Thank you.
No problem.
Uh, let's see, I'm next, Exeter Royal and Preservation Trust, they're still working on getting their format straightened up.
Yeah, I can't know.
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay.
They're fucking along, though.
Yeah.
Exeter Public Library, um, they're, during the day, they have two story hours, they're well-attended. Um, they encourage the young kids, take them there, uh, and then they still are doing passports. Um, nothing new on the North Kingsdale Preserve, um, so Ken, council assistant, report it.
No, nothing, no, there's no comment.
Jim here looking, uh...
Different than I do. Slusher report.
Yeah, I have more hair, that's what I'm... No, I- I have nothing to report, I don't know if anyone has any questions. Jim will be- be at, will be back, uh, later this week, I think on Thursday.
Okay.
But I could step in if there's anything urgent.
Oh, I don't think so. So going to the bill appropriation abatements? I'll make a motion to approve the bill sheet. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tax assessors abatements?
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the tax collectors remittances and abatements?
Moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other administrative issues?
Oh, I just was gonna bring up the one issue, I just don't like, oh, I know Linda's not working with the trust and all this about, uh, harassment training, but I don't even have anything to say to them, yeah. Nothing ready for us to discuss, uh, at this point.
Well, the league and the, um...
And it doesn't, no administrative rule, there's a policy?
Okay, but it was an issue that...
Well, it is, but I think we...
Because we're supervising, so I do figure it was an issue that needed to be addressed.
This would be...
And I don't think we take any action, I just wanted to...
Oh, she gave us update?
Sure.
All right.
But we have, but we had it next month.
Or do you have any updates now for us, or...
Well, I sent an email today where the league and the trust will do training free, but then we talked about the online training. I've checked with all the cities and towns, they all said, uh, league, trust, they all have in-house training. Um, they mandate year to year.
Mm-hmm.
Now, my concern is new employees, what do we do about them? Should we train everybody? And we get a new employee out of the train. And, um, courses might be the way to go. And then the other questions are, are we gonna mandate this for everybody? Volunteers, board members who aren't paid, board members who are paid, you know, it's like, and so like, still...
Have you talked to any of your fellow town boards with regards to how the other municipalities do it, with regards to volunteer?
I didn't ask that question, though.
But you just suggested...
But then, um, doesn't the policy say that it's for everybody?
Yeah, the policy dictates that everybody can be adopted, there you go.
So would everybody need to be trained?
Yeah.
Yeah, yearly?
Not according to the policy, unless something new comes up that the council...
Does the policy speak to training? No.
No, notification. So supervisors should be notifying the staff to the policy.
Of the policy.
The policy, and make them aware of what's contained, and...
But I think you just suggested maybe we put it on next month's agenda, so then we can keep it going, and I think you said the same thing, so... Why don't you just note it, and we'll just sort of keep it going until we find a resolution.
Moving on to communications, it looks like most of them are not addressed, it looks like we're down to eighteen, twenty, and twenty-four. We've not addressed previously.
Eighteen, you see this.
Eighteen, twenty, and twenty-four, so eighteen...
Eighteen was that one?
Eighteen, that's the one.
That's the problem, with the grant.
Twenty was the, um, I wasn't really gonna speak about it, but the, uh, fourth annual daily, uh, Dowdell Memorial Motorcycle Run for sister five roses, um, five roses on, uh, Sunday, the October fourteenth, I just wanted to let people know that, that's all. For that to keep happening, and we're gonna have a group for that, with the motorcycle run.
And it's twenty-four?
Yep.
I think I had it, you might.
It was just a letter from Elizabeth Snyder saying she thanked the people who came on the Animal Shelter Study Committee, and... And I- I had, I had, it was very informative, Tom, I mean, you know, we had our moments, but, you know, we, I think we got a lot accomplished from the time that we had, and we got to get plenty of applause, everybody got their plenty of applause, so, that's all. Just wanted to bring that up, and maybe we're writing a letter, that's all.
The committee, as far as I know, is still formally in existence, is that the intent, or you spoke of dismissing the committee or something?
It is, as of now, still exists, I think we may wanna, once we're done with our, maybe putting to the changes that we're talking about, maybe use your experts' input on the fee schedule, and then I think we at that point dismiss.
Yeah.
But, maybe...
Why did that bicycle go? That's all for me, Mr. President.
Nothing for executive session? Then I'll make a...
Did we need to discuss anything having to do with the transfer station?
What's your opinion for us?
I- I don't have anything new, no.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good job, Kevin.
Yeah.
Sorry, Dan.
You almost made it.
You got the, you got the...
My thought you said...
Yes, yeah. Oh, Jeff, for a while.
It's like you'd be high, so there, and people that...
So Ryan, it's...
Yeah, I don't, uh...
Something to be up.
Do you? I don't think I'm gonna hold on to that. Do you? It's gonna be a failure. Oh, that's it, I would just add, uh...